All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the school board meeting. I called the meeting to order at 7:02. Please note, the public is invited to call 603-766-5646. Enter participant code 685-562 if you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Please wait for the chair's instructions and then press star nine. Your microphone will be unmuted and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You can also email your public comment to Denise.Moran@SAU19.org prior to 3:00 PM of the meeting date. Please indicate public comment today's date, Goffstown School Board meeting, in the subject line and include your name and address and limit your comments to no more than 500 words. The board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting, however, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. The board meeting can be viewed on GTV 16 On Demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube channel. We do have two board members on the phone. When I say your name, if you can just say here and alone, Janelle O'Brien.
Here and alone.
And Dan Cludier.
I am here and alone.
Okay, thank you. If everybody can rise and say the pledge with me.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. So before we start our regular school board meeting tonight, we are going to be interviewing three candidates who have applied for the board vacancy. You should all have their resumes and Brian came up with questions for me to ask. If you have questions of your own, once we finish, you can ask them at that time.
Okay, so are we ready?
Yeah.
All right.
Let's start with...
On your sheets, in your packets, we'll start with Tana first, so let me go get her.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Indeed.
Okay. How are you? Welcome. Come on in. Once again. We've got a chair down there with a dedicated mic just for you.
Right here.
Yeah, down around. Sorry, it's a little trash can.
Good evening. Welcome to the school board. My name is Heather and we're going to ask a few questions for you. Wonderful. And if you have any questions for us at the end, feel free to ask.
All right, perfect, thank you.
So the first question is, we'll first say your name and then why are you interested in serving on the school board?
My name is Tana Cisco and I'm interested in serving on the school board. I saw the year spot, the vacancy, and I thought with my background, particularly in areas of higher education, governance, and even my background in statistics, that I could easily come in for the year, it wouldn't take a big leap for me to be able to right away go in and help with decision-making and then move forward.
Great, thank you. And would you plan to run for the board in March?
I would say you'd have to ask me.
Right, in January.
Ask me later.
Right, thank you. And what personal attributes make a school board member successful?
Well, I think the personal attributes, one, you have to be able to multitask and understand all the variables that are going on, not just with the school, but with multiple schools, as well as outside of the school in terms of the state and local government and how that particularly state or lack of state funding plays into the part on how those schools work. I think that's important for a school board member to know and to see how intricate that is. And I think that that shapes a lot of the decision-making. If it were a perfect world, we'd have plenty of tax dollars to be able to make all the decisions that we want. That does not, that's not how it works. So there are governance issues at place that shape our decisions and that's important to know.
Right, thank you. And do you have sufficient time and energy to positively contribute to the Goffstown School Board?
I do. I am a working parent. I'm a professor at St. Anson College, but I am finishing up my four-year term as faculty senate president, which is where I've gotten a lot of my administrative and governance-related decisions, from budgets to staffing to faculty handbooks all across the board. That time is blessedly coming to a close for me. And with this, I saw the email and I thought, this is one way that I can give back and help out in the school district where I have my child.
Wonderful, thank you. Do you have questions for us?
I think at this point, I don't, well, one question that I would have in terms of your committee, the subcommittees, what area would this vacancy fill in terms of subcommittee work? Would it be curriculum, or finance, or policy, or all of them?
It could be any of the above.
Okay.
We do have board members that have filled a lot of those positions, but there are a few that have some vacancies that we would need filled.
Okay.
Policy is one, finance is one.
Okay.
So...
I have area, I've got background in both of those. Like I said, I work for a tuition-driven institution. We have budgets.
Yep.
And I've been working on that for plenty of years now, either in my role as faculty senate president, faculty senate, or chair of the department.
Awesome.
So I understand how that works.
Does anybody have a question? No? Okay. So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jared.
I'm going to butcher your name and I do apologize for that.
Tana.
Close to Tanya.
Tana. Like sauna, but with a T.
Tanya.
Don't...
I'll continue to butcher and I do apologize in advance. Looking at the school board, and I'd like to understand your financial policies, what's your thoughts on having over-collected revenue from taxes or under expenditures within our expense budget? How do you think that that should be used?
That's a great question. And I think part of that depends on, especially, we don't want to get into the situation where we did a couple of years ago, where with the accidental financial issue and then subsequently we're seeing payback going to tax, to tax contributors around Goffstown. I think that has to be a collective decision. We need to look at the intricacies of it. So I don't want to say what I would do right now unless I have all of the details. Does that make sense? I hate weighing in on a decision right away unless I know all of the variables involved in it.
Would there, permission to follow?
Sure.
Would there be any circumstances where you would approve funds to be used for non-budgeted items?
Can you give me example of the non-budgeted items that you're talking about?
Well, we have a, something that'll be coming to us later today to move money to seed a field within our middle school. And those funds would be coming from an allocated budget that unfortunately we weren't able to spend due to COVID for athletics. Should we be using that type of money for things that we haven't thought of or budgeted within our, within our operating budget?
So I'll give you a good example of something that's similar to something that I had to do today as well, was the idea of are we, can I transfer money and should I be transferring money from one budget line to be able to pay for something that I didn't expect to come up with? I had to make that decision based on those specific variables today. Yes, I would. I'd have to go in deeper, though, to be sitting on the board, looking at everything before I could say yes or no.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jared. Anyone else have any questions? All right, so what, we're going to finish interviewing. You can go home.
All right.
After our meeting, we will go into non-public and discuss, and Superintendent Bulkey will call you tomorrow, either way.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight.
Thanks for being here.
So Shane.
Shane.
Come on in, Shane. Shane, we've got a chair and a table right over there for you if you want to just round the corner.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Shane. Welcome to the school board.
Thank you.
My name is Heather. I'm going to ask some questions. If you could just first state your name.
Sure. My name is Shane Rosmas.
All right, thank you. And why are you interested in serving on the school board?
So I'm interested in serving on the school board because I am passionate about education and I am a strong advocate for making sure that all children have access to the supports and systems that they need to be successful. I'm an educator by trade. I'm a special education teacher. I, you know, every, I've actually been lucky to experience a number of different roles within the school system, really. Been a substitute teacher, been a paraprofessional, I've been a coach, I've been a special education teacher, I'm currently the department head of my department. So I really have a broad perspective of how schools work and, you know, what it takes to make a school and a department run. So that's part of why I'm interested. Also, I ran in the last election, so getting involved in the community is something that I'm very invested in. I also have a child on the way, so they'll be attending our schools...
Congratulations.
Soon, so I'm very invested in making sure our schools are strong now and in the future.
Right, absolutely. And would you plan to run for the board in March?
Absolutely, yeah.
And what personal attributes make a school board member successful?
Well, I think a school board member needs to be collaborative. I think they need to be strong communicators. They absolutely should have an understanding of education, how schools run, how schools work. You know, I think that a school member needs to be open to ideas outside of their comfort zone. I think it's important that they're open to listening to constituents, listening to other board members, listening to people within the schools. So I think for me, really, it's just a strong communication and, you know, being able to understand what's going on both locally and at the state level, because as we all know, what happens at the state level often impacts how we budget and legislate at the local level. So keeping all those things in mind is super important as a school board member. So those are some of the key things that I would, I would kind of hit on.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
And do you have sufficient time and energy to positively contribute to the Goffstown School Board?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I mean, I watch a lot of your meetings, so I kind of, I kind of know how you guys work and...
That's good.
I'm pretty familiar with, you know, the process of the school board and the role that it plays in creating policy and kind of, you know, supporting the district and superintendent and district staff, so...
And does anybody have a question for Shane? No?
Guess I will.
Go ahead, Jared.
Great for others. Shane, thank you for coming today. One question that I'm asking all of our candidates is, what do you think our policy, or what would your policy be, when we have a over-collection of revenue, i.e. taxes, or an under expenditure of our operating budget? Should we reallocate that for things that are currently not in our budget and that would not go to any kind of curriculum?
So I think it's difficult when you allocate it to things that aren't currently in the budget. My proposal would probably be to look at like a rainy day fund, to kind of have that money available at a later time for later budgets. I think it's hard to really allocate money to things that the community doesn't really, hasn't really had the opportunity to have a say on.
Thank you.
Sure.
Much appreciated, yeah.
Did you have a follow-up question?
Nope. He's good.
All right, anyone else? So we're going to finish our interviews. You can go home.
Okay.
After our meeting tonight, we'll go into non-public, make a decision, and Superintendent Bulkey will call you tomorrow.
Great.
And tell you either way.
All right.
But thank you for applying and coming in tonight.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
All right, thank you, Shane.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks, guys. Nice to meet you, pleasure.
All right, so...
Hey, Heather?
Yes, Dan.
Yes, Dan. I just wanted to make a comment while Jared, while we're switching off candidates. Over-collection of revenues cannot be expended for any other purpose but for tax abatement, just as a comment.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
It'd be kind of cool if a candidate would be able to answer that.
Or knew that.
I'm going to ask board members again to really speak up, because now we're also further apart.
Can you hear me okay, Ellen?
I can hear you. You have a strong voice, you, I can hear.
Right in front of me.
But some of us talk low.
Well, let me know if I need to speak up, Ellen.
You cleaned it for me, how nice.
Right here.
Thank you.
Still drying.
That's all right.
Hi, Daniel, welcome to the school board. I'm Heather.
Hello.
How are you?
Pleasure.
If you could just state your full name.
Daniel Allen McInnis Jr.
Great, thank you. And I'm just going to ask you a few questions, okay?
Sure.
So why are you interested in serving on the school board?
Well, I got the email that was, you know, seeking candidates and I thought, this is my community asking for my help.
Right.
So I conferred with my wife and we both agreed, I definitely have the scheduling availability for it. I have the passion for it. I have three kids, two of which are in the school system.
Nice.
Doing a great job, by the way. And it seemed like the right thing to do.
Wonderful. And would you plan to run for the board in March?
If you do not torture me, then yes.
You can't make any promises.
Well, then neither can I.
What personal attributes make a school board member successful?
I think to be successful at the school board, you need to be organized, you need to be dedicated, and you need to be mindful that your chief role is to ensure that the education that you oversee is provided at, with the best results at the best value.
Right. And do you have sufficient time and energy to positively contribute to the school board?
Well, I definitely have enough energy despite the three children. And I have a very flexible schedule, so yes.
Okay, wonderful. Do you have questions for us?
Uh, no.
No?
I watched a couple of the videos you guys have online to get a concept of it.
Yeah, good idea.
Thank you.
Does anybody have a question for Daniel? I know Jared will, but is anybody else? All right, Jared, go ahead.
I'm asking a question of all of our candidates tonight. There are certain circumstances within the school where we have an over-collection of revenue or a under-spend on our expenditures, i.e. where we're not using all of our budget.
Sure.
What would be your thoughts or policy about taking those funds and transferring it to other lines that are not in our operating budget to be used and spent?
Within the school budget or outside of?
Within the school budget.
Is there a percentage assigned to it? Is it like 5% over or 150% over?
It could be whatever the, usually we have an unreserved fund balance of over 3% at the end of the year.
Oh, wow.
Historically and empirically. But what are your thoughts about spending that money on things that are not in our budget?
I think that's a wise decision and I say that because, I mean, I'm a manager at a business, right? And I know that, I spend a lot of time in November and December planning out my year. And on January 2nd, because we're closed on the 1st, it goes to crap. And things just don't work out, right? So you guys are going to experience a myriad of expenses, a myriad of situations that are going to arise, that you did not plan for and you obviously didn't budget for. As a consequence of that, having that money available, you know, it's going to be available, but historically it's available. The city has already committed to it, the citizens have committed to it, the people want you to spend that money on education. So putting that money out into other expenses that have come up, or opportunities if they present themselves, should absolutely be seized on. Thank you.
No follow-up, you're good?
No, no follow-up.
All right. And no one else has any questions for Daniel? All right, so you can go home. And once we finish our meeting, we'll go into non-public.
Okay.
And tomorrow Superintendent Bulkey will contact you either way. But we thank you for applying and coming in tonight.
Thank you all for your time and your dedication and volunteer work. This is great, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And have a great night.
You too, Daniel.
Pleasure.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll continue on with our board meeting. Did everybody have a chance to read the minutes from March 15th? Did anybody see anything?
I have one thing I'd like to offer as a suggestion. In the first election of officers and the paragraphs, when we do an election, it's either you vote or you don't vote, so it's not really a motion. I would like to see that reflected in the minutes where there apparently were six votes for Heather and seven votes for...
Retta.
Retta.
Uh-huh.
And it's not really a motion passed and it doesn't have to be anybody who said no or it's just, if you said yes, you're listed and was there a preponderance of the votes for the election?
Okay, so how do you want it to read? Not motion passed?
I would just like to see, because we did a roll call vote because there's a few of us on the phone, we have to do it that way.
Right.
But it's only, it's not a motion. It's like, the way the superintendent said, there's nominees saying, is there a plurality of vote? And Heather received six votes, that is a plurality, she was elected as chair, and likewise for Retta.
Okay, so instead of motion passed, you want just nomination passed?
Um...
Or plurality of votes?
It would be Heather received a plurality of the vote. She's elected chair.
And then the same with Retta? Retta was elected vice...
Yes. Retta received a plurality of the votes and was elected vice chair.
Is everybody okay with that? Go ahead, Ellen.
My question, Dan, with this, I understand there was no motion, there was nobody to vote, there were no, only one person was running for each or nominated for each position. But if there had been more than one, there would be a vote.
No, there was a vote no matter what. You have to. In our bylaws, it says you must vote to and receive a plurality.
To receive a plurality, okay.
So is everybody, what's, what's the reason, Dan, of not leaving it the way it is?
Because there was...
Because it wasn't a motion. We didn't make a motion.
Right, we asked for nominations and then...
We are looking for a plurality.
Would it be confirmed the nomination then?
Or, yeah, or the plurality of the votes.
It says for a plurality of votes.
Right.
There was no motion.
Right, no motion.
So to end it with plurality of vote...
Right.
Just makes sense.
Yep. Did you get that, Denise?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Did anybody see anything else? Oh, yes, Retta, sorry, I have to look over this way.
And I usually don't raise things, but I just wanted to point out on page 12 after we left non-public, that Ellen requested affirmation of the vote, but then what was actually on the table wasn't affirmation of the vote, which is how we voted on. So, so this is fourth paragraph down.
Right, yep, I see what you're talking about.
But we didn't vote on that, we voted on the monies.
Right, so what was first initially proposed and what we actually voted on were two different things.
Yes, there were.
And I realize this was in non-public, so we really can't talk about it now.
We can't discuss details, right? Right, because we were just affirming the vote.
Actually, we were, the motion was to appropriate the sum of money for the personnel matter discussed in non-public. That's what we voted on. Period.
So I'm just pointing out that the paragraph above said that we were requesting affirmation.
Right.
And we never voted on it.
Okay, there was no motion for it.
Well, there was, but then it got all back and forth and confusion and discussion and stuff. So how do you, there's, I don't think there's much we can do to change it.
Yeah.
I don't know.
In, in the end, I mean, there's just a disconnect between those two paragraphs.
Between the two, yeah.
And votes don't necessarily, you know, did the votes relate to the first paragraph from the seventh?
No.
So I think there's just some lack of clarity there.
I think during the voting, I think there was some confusion. Am I correct?
Right.
Okay. But the vote...
In the end, in the end, the vote...
Was what we decided.
And I don't know if we just want to put a note in there, I don't think we need to do any revoting, but, you know, the vote that was taken wasn't necessarily on what was initially proposed and may not accurately be correct.
Okay.
Heather, does anybody feel like there needs to be a revote? Or are they comfortable? I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with how the vote came out. I don't want to assume people are going to vote differently, okay? If at some point in our meeting, it would be appropriate for, it could be me or anybody else who voted yes, to vote for, I guess technically it would be a motion to reconsider and then a motion that would pass, I hope, and then we, I restate the exact motion and then revote on it. It's up to you folks, I'm fine with it as it is, but...
I'm confused, so the vote that's listed, or what's listed in bold and italics, is that the vote that you presented? As far as my recollection is, that is the vote that you brought up?
Yes, it is. But there was confusion and a number of people voted no in the confusion.
I think the confusion, if I may, was whether or not we wanted to do the vote in public versus not do the vote in public. And I, is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, the motion was specifically for the dollar amount...
No, 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 no. Understand, Ellen, that's how I voted, the way it was written. But the people who may not have answered the way they believe they answered may have been answering the question that I just presented.
Yes, that's right.
That's what I'm asking.
That's right. And that's why I'm asking the board if they're comfortable leaving it as is, or if they'd be more comfort if there was a reconsideration and a revote. But that, I don't want to cause any issues, but...
No, I'm, I'm fine leaving it as is. I just wanted to make it clear to everybody. And again, it was late, we were tired and...
Okay.
It was a long night. All right, did anybody else see anything on the minutes before do a motion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to pass, to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2021, with the revisions.
Yes.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Ginny?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call, Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Oh, sorry, can I?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Janelle.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I meant to abstain. I want to play it too.
That's okay. And Dan said yes. Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So that is one abstention and the rest are yes.
Is there a procedure? It would have to be a no voter that asks to reconsider and re-vote on it so that there's clarity in the votes cast? I don't even know if that's permitted, but...
Well, I'm sure Dan would bring up the Roberts rules, but as I recall, it's only those people that are in the affirmation can bring something back for vote.
Oh, it's only the yeses. Okay.
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you. I had it backwards.
No, you're good.
Would board members feel more comfortable? I know we're doing minutes now, but if at some point in this meeting, I'm fine with it as it is, and I'm glad Retta brought up that there was confusion.
Right.
I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with how the vote came out. I don't want to assume people are going to vote differently, okay? If at some point in our meeting, it would be appropriate for, it could be me or anybody else who voted yes, to vote for, I guess technically it would be a motion to reconsider, and then a motion that would pass, I hope, and then we, I restate the exact motion and then re-vote on it. It's up to you folks. I'm fine with it as it is, but...
I'm confused. So the vote that's listed, or what's listed in bold and italics, is that the vote that you presented? As far as my recollection is, that is the vote that you brought up?
But there was confusion, and a number of people voted no in the confusion.
I think the confusion, if I may, was whether or not we wanted to do the vote in public versus not do the vote in public. And is that what I'm hearing?
Nope, the motion was specifically for the dollar amount.
No, 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 no. Understand, Ellen. That's how I voted, the way it was written. But the people who may not have answered the way they believe they answered may have been answering the question that I just presented.
Yes, that's right.
That's what I'm asking.
That's right, and that's why I'm asking the board if they're comfortable leaving it as is, or if they'd be more comfort if there was a reconsideration and a re-vote. I don't want to cause any issues, but...
No, I'm fine leaving it as is. I just wanted to make it clear
Okay.
to everybody, and again, it was late. We were tired and...
Okay.
It was a long night. All right, did anybody else see anything on the minutes before do a motion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to pass, to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of March 15, 2021 with the revisions.
Yes.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Ginny?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Oh, sorry, can I?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Janelle.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I meant to abstain. I want to claim it too.
That's okay. And Dan said yes. Ellen?
Yes.
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So that is one abstention, and the rest are yes. All right, correspondence.
Just one thing this evening, actually two.
Yes, in our pocket.
Yeah, the first was, we received a very nice note from Rick Wilhelmy thanking the board, and he sent some photos as well for the Parks and Rec basketball program that the board was able to support. So thank you to Erin and Rick. And the second thing is, we received a proclamation from Governor Sununu declaring April 2021 as Genocide Awareness Month, so I wanted the board to be aware of that as well.
Thank you. So commendations, good news. Caleb, go ahead.
I've got quite a bit tonight.
All right.
First, I'd like to commend Ms. Philibot, Mr. Derocher, Mr. Belding, and Ms. O'Keefe. They're the performing arts, kind of those people who just put on the musical, which we just filmed the last scenes this Friday. It's currently in post, and we're due to, it's due to start streaming mid-April. So thank you to all of you for supporting that. Thank you to all the cast and crew for their hard work, long hours, and thank you to especially those four teachers and staff for just being amazing for this entire thing. I would also like to thank Ms. Brown and Mr. Chadbourne. This Saturday, they had, as they always are, a very successful mock exam for AP Calculus. They're the two AP Calculus teachers here at the high school. And Future Business Leader of America, they recently had their state leadership conference. It's kind of a spring competition for them. They did very well. They had a number of people place at their first, second, or third. And one of, we had a candidate for state officer Vincent Peng, who didn't even win a spot on the officer board for next year. I'm sure he'll do very well. And finally, just, I'd like to thank the athletic department for making a kind of a transition into spring sports this week easy, and a lot of people have joined spring sports and have expressed just their gratitude for how easy and how safe it's been for them.
Wonderful. Thank you, Caleb. That was quite a list. Great things happening. Anyone else? Ellen?
Yeah, I'd like to commend Maple Avenue's Parent Faculty Together Group, PFT. I did participate in this. They had some volunteers come in and chalk, sidewalk chalked the entrances and the sidewalk around the front of the building, welcoming the teachers and encouraging the teachers. I think it was the first day of the immunizations that they were going to go for. And inspirational things and drawings, and it was very nice, nicely done. I think when the teachers went in, I heard that they appreciated the nice words and the appreciation from the parents.
That's awesome. Thank you, Ellen. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, moving on to public comment. Scott, do we have anyone?
Let me double check. No, we don't.
All right, so we're moving on to our committee records. So Scott, that's you.
Sure. Tonight, we have a manifest in the amount of $1,580,141.54, of which nearly $1.2 million is related to payroll, taxes, and benefits. Our special ed activity is a little over $103,000, and our general expenses, about $200,000 of that. The only ones that are somewhat noteworthy, we did purchase numerous desks, as you are well aware, and we are, we did receive those. We're starting to pay the bills on those. We also purchased some FM systems for Maple Avenue School. What we're trying to do is to make sure that every classroom has these for students who have hearing impairments. And then, yes, that's really the gist of it. Then performance food service, you'll see this every once in a while. We have over $5,000 in terms of our food and commodities, but other than that, it's a pretty, it's a pretty similar one we see from time to time. Are there any questions that board members have? Dan or Janelle on the phone, or anyone?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Yes, Dan.
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question?
Okay. All right, so if there's no questions, I'll need a motion to approve the manifest.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the manifest.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ellen, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather. We're unanimous. All right, Scott, go ahead.
All right, the next thing I wanted to is to briefly, I don't have a handout for you, but this is more verbal, in terms of our fund balance review, and as I think as Jared was mentioning, that's based upon our revenues and our expenditures. And I'm projecting at this point that we're on track to meet or exceed what our unassigned fund balance projection is going to be. So our revenues are tracking better on the tuition side and on special education reimbursement. There's a couple ones that are, that are not trending well, but they're very, very minor, like Medicaid reimbursement is not all that great. But we only budgeted $50,000 for it, and, you know, we're slightly below that. We also budgeted $55,000 for rental, like field rentals, room rentals, et cetera, due to COVID. That's down. But overall, our revenues are coming in better than anticipated. And lastly, on the expenditure side, we're also looking fairly good. And so there are some lines which we've incredibly overspent, like our contracted services line for special education, where we had originally budgeted $400,000, and we're close to $1 million because we could not hire a lot of these personnel staff. So that just shows that kind of the, but you've seen that through all of your budget transfers, you know, throughout the year. The other thing that I want to also make note of is that as part of the state budget, which is going to get voted on by the House, I believe this week, part of that budget is going to use our FY '20 ADM and our free and reduced lunch counts. And if that budget passes, that will have a $350,000 positive impact on what our projections were in terms of your tax rate, et cetera. So not all things are bad at the state level. That was a good thing that both the House and the Senate, I think the governor, are all in agreement on, and that will help us. When I set our projections, I used the lower amount, just so you know. So if this, if it passes, we'll see it'll be good for us, and if it doesn't, then it's a push. So I just want to let you know we're, you know, we're trending well in that, in that direction. And part of this then dovetails, you know, to the next conversation on the budget transfer. Are there any questions on the fund balance itself?
Oh, go ahead, Ellen.
What was the expectation that the fund balance would be?
So in your revenue sheet, we had projected $1.7 million fund balance exclusive of putting money into the 2.5% contingency fund.
Exclusive, so we'd have to take that out.
No, that money would be in addition to...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you good, Ellen? All right, go ahead, Scott.
All right, so the next one, I sent you a memo with regard to a budget transfer. And as per board policy, I can't do any budget transfers that are over $10,000. That has to be decided upon by the, by the school board. So essentially here, you know, part of this goes back to last year. So last year, when we closed, we put about $3,000 into split seeding, fertilization at Mountain View Field in the hopes that the field conditions would improve because nobody's on them. That really didn't work. So in conversations with Parks and Rec, with Rick Wilhelmy, with Justin Hupder, our AD, as well as the folks at Mountain View, Mr. Garrity, who's our AD there, because of the irrigation issue, the seed didn't really, didn't take. Although we do have a water cannon, it would be, it's very analogous to, again, moving a sprinkler head around. It's not that easy. This thing's kind of a monster. So Rick Wilhelmy and I had some conversations. We got Justin involved, and we talked about what would be the possibility of irrigating, you know, those fields. It's been talked about for quite a long time. These are fields that are the lower fields to Mountain View, used not only by our students, but also tremendous community use. So Tri-Town Soccer plays on them. There's, there's a lot of other football, you know, you name it, lacrosse. They're always in use. And right now, if you ask folks like Rick and those who take care of it, it's kind of a dust bowl down there. So I went out and I asked a local landscape vendor to give me what that person felt would be a reasonable cost to install an irrigation system. There is water. There's a water stub that is already down there. There's electricity already down there. And the quote that I got was between $35,000 and $40,000 for the installation of it, and about $2,000 to $3,000 for the water use, as well as for some maintenance in terms of sprinkler heads, because every once in a while, you have to replace a sprinkler head. So with that, you know, when you look at the fact that we have this COVID-19 pandemic, we did not spend any money on Mountain View Middle School transportation for athletics. So that's a little over $24,000 was, it was not spent and will not be spent on athletics for Mountain View for transportation. The thought process was, was to transfer those funds for this irrigation system, and then the balance we already have in our building and grounds budget that would cover the balance of it. The mentality or the thought process was also, we were intending to use this for sports. It's still going to be used for sports, not only is it going to be used for our kids, but for, for the community, and this is a pretty big asset right now. It's just the fields are in horrible, horrible shape. The other thing that I would wanted to let you and the, and the community know that we do collect about $3,000 to $5,000 in normal years through various organizations, and this, that money would then help offset those maintenance-type fees, you know, in terms of the water and, you know, and sprinkler heads and things like that. So that's really it. It's a, it's, it's a budget transfer that I can't approve, nor can the superintendent. It's something that you, the board, has to weigh and consider. We do, by doing this, it kind of dovetails back to what I said before about our fund balance. This would have no impact on hitting our, we would still hit our fund balance targets if we did do this.
So Scott, ooh, just to clarify, so you need a budget transfer of $24,120?
Yeah.
And then what about the rest?
The rest, we already have monies available in our building and grounds budget.
So that is already in that line?
It's already in the line already.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Scott? Ginny, go ahead.
This has been a problem since these fields were made down in the bottom of that hill. Is that right?
Yes.
I've heard about these fields and watering since the beginning of time, and they're, they're fields that get a ton of use. And we get these funds from Tri-Town, from the footpup, I believe it is, football. They get a lot, a lot of use and a lot of community use as well as school use. It seems to me like this would, this transfer would make sense. It's, it's not taking it out of a different line. It's not taking it out of books. It's taking it out of sports. And it would, I think, probably keep us from using more money in years to come if this was taken care of correctly instead of packed, excuse me, mouth got...
That's okay.
Mask got in my mouth. If it's, if we don't continue throwing Band-Aids at that, we take care of it correctly for once and for all.
I did fail to mention that due to the amount this would go out to bid, one good thing is that we have at least four or five companies within Gobstown that we've done business with as a school district that would be competing for this type of project. So I feel pretty good that we would get a very competitive price and that the eventual awardee, because we have so many Gobstown businesses that do this, that would kind of be monies that would stay in the Gobstown community, which is also tends to be a good thing.
Because I know since my kids played soccer and field hockey on those fields, my kids are pretty old, so it's been an ongoing issue for a really long time.
Thank you, Ginny. Go ahead, Jared.
Scott, if this has been an issue for some time, what operating budget was this put into so that we can get it before the budget committee and the voters so that they'd be able to see this and approve it as their constituency?
Well, I think you know the answer to that. It wasn't in our operating budget.
So if this fails for a transfer, would we be putting it in our next budget that we'd want to present to the town?
That would be the decision for the administration.
And so this, this is a very good example. There is a long list of things that we would like to do. And this, and by the way, I would add to this, that the other fields at Mountain View, the baseball field and the softball field are also in terrible condition. Part of what I had asked Scott to look at when we started discussing this was the ability to put another stub that at a later point, we could take water and bring it over to the baseball field. Jared, this is a good example of the kind of thing that principals have asked for for years and I have cut. So typically, when, when board, the budget gets to the board, there already have been a lot of cuts over the years, and this would be the kind of thing that would never see the light of day. There are other things that we need, but we just simply don't budget for, we could use a new tractor. We don't budget $45,000 for a tractor because it's the kind of thing that just doesn't make it through the budget process.
So if I may, question to follow. So is this, is this really just a matter of opportunity where we had extra money that was left over from not being able to use that expenditures for sports for our students, and instead of giving it back to the taxpayers because those students couldn't play this with, you know, couldn't play on the fields for the, the spring or the fall, that we want to then reallocate that money for things that have not been presented to the community?
I think that's exactly a great summation. And in fact, last year in the spring, let's not forget, we didn't have any spring sports. So the, the students that would use those fields in the spring, lacrosse, and, you know, they just, the fields weren't used. We had hoped that they would, we kind of thought that this was the opportunity to, let's really buckle down and try to grow grass. And you just can't grow grass down there without an irrigation system. So we didn't do any spring sports last year. All of those savings were passed along with tax relief, and because we had basically zero transportation for middle school sports, we thought that this would be a good opportunity to take those monies that were budgeted for that department and use it to make it better moving forward. So that, that's really, and, you know, your question about the budget, if this came up in the budget next year, I would cut it again. So this is the kind of thing that Ginny often asks the question, what do principals want, but, but they don't, it doesn't make it to the school board. This is a great example of them. And really, we think that athletics and our student athletes, we believe that the classroom extends to the fields. So for us, you know, we truly believe in co-curriculars. We believe in the performing arts. We believe in athletics. And all of those things make a well-rounded education for our kids.
Jared, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good with my questions.
Ellen, go ahead, and then I...
And this, because there's nothing, there is no irrigation down there, this is not a capital item that we could use for the capital reserve fund because we're not replacing or repairing anything.
Correct.
This is new.
Yes.
Okay.
Retta?
I feel similarly about the project, but I do have one question. In your saying that the next last paragraph under other that the $3,000 to $5,000 in field use fees will serve as a revenue to offset the ongoing maintenance.
Right.
Where does that $3,000 to $5,000 get used?
So what I just explained when I talked about the fund balance, as part of our revenue picture, we get, on average, we were getting between $50,000 to $55,000 in revenues from, part of that is field rental or space rental. So we charge $1,000 per season per field. So you could, we typically get for Mountain View, I think, $5,000 for the use of the softball field or the lower baseball field, or for those two lower fields throughout different seasons, and that's what I meant, what I meant by that. So, you know, right now, it, it would help offset, because you're going to have unoperating costs. I didn't want to disillusion anybody here. You're going to have probably about a $2,000 water bill and probably another $1,000 in terms of maintenance if a sprinkler head goes, or you have to flush your system, things like that. So I wanted you to know that that will be an ongoing expense, but it's going to get offset by the fact that, you know, we charge. And not to mention the fact, but we're charging people for use of fields. You'd hope it's going to be a good field.
And you do have to blow it out every single...
Yeah, every, every season at the end. You have to blow it all out, then it freezes, and you're in tough shape.
So Scott, I have a question. If this goes through, when were you planning on doing this? And how does that affect our spring sports that are down there and fall?
Good question. That would, this would be a summer project, so we would put it out to bid. out to bid in the late spring, almost early summer. I, I would anticipate this would be like a June, July, August type of thing, so it wouldn't, early August, so it wouldn't interfere with our.
With any of the sports. Okay, perfect. Does anybody have more questions for Scott?
I have one.
Go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead, Dan.
So in years past, when we had some funds available, we would get a list of things that we wanted to do, or potentially do, and then we would go through it, and we would look at it in a mass list and say, okay, now that we're doing this off that particular channel, it comes to light as a unique type of debate, and it's a little different in concept. I'm finding myself struggling to make a unique decision on this versus that list that we've done in the past. Am I the only one?
You haven't had that list in.
It's been a while.
A long time.
It's been a while since we had a list.
I think this is different in a way, Dan, because it's athletic money and athletic use. I think that's what makes the difference to me. Did you hear that, Dan?
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So, and I want to know, is, is there a list similarly to what Dan was asking, but in relation to athletics?
We have gotten away from that premise of developing a list for end-of-the-year spending. When we established with the community support, the Capital Reserve Fund, that was essentially the point in time where that end-of-the-year list went away. I would say we have a very comprehensive CIP program, as well as what we affectionately refer to as the mini CIP, which are items under twenty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, this is, this is definitely something that we are looking at a little opportunistically, that this is something that has been a problem since 1989, when the school was built. They had the foresight to bring water down there, to bring power down there, but they never did the, the irrigation system. That really, you know, to, to invest some money back then, these fields would have been pristine for the last several decades. So we saw this as an opportunity that we, we didn't expend these budget monies, and it was a way to put it back into the program.
Thank you, Brian. All right, so we've discussed quite a bit. If everybody is good with the discussion, and would like to make a motion to move twenty-four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars from the athletics transportation line to the facility build and maintenance line, I'll entertain a motion for that. Go ahead, Reda.
I'll make the motion to transfer the twenty-four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars from the transportation budget line to the building and grounds line.
Of middle school?
Of the middle school.
Yeah, we should probably say that.
For the proposed project.
Okay. Did you get that, Denise?
Mm-hmm.
All right, do I have a second? By Ginny, any other further discussion? Jared?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I will not be voting in favor of this for multiple reasons. The first, which is that this was a COVID year, and though I agree that this is very important, and it would be great to be able to have this, I don't think that we should be using unreserved fund balance, or what would be going to unreserved fund balance, to offset our tax rates for the, for, for the inability of, of what we've not been able to do, which is have sports. I, I think that if we could have sports, we would have had sports. And to just take this money from, you know, the unreserved fund balance is inappropriate. If we were using this in conjunction with increasing what our field fees would be to actually offset, set this as a return on investment, that could be something that I would entertain. But this is another item of, we have money left over, we're going to start spending holidays in June, July to knock off our wish list, that hasn't gone before the Budget Committee, that hasn't gone before our constituency, and this is how we start growing the opposition to our fiscal sound plan that we've had for the past couple of years. And that's why I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else?
And Scott, if you would be able to nickel and dime some of the other accounts, can you come up with money? And in effect, it's the same concept, but it's not earmarking a single account. It's just, I'm not asking you to do it, I'm just wondering, what does it look like in our sports?
The answer to that, Dan, is that across the athletics and co-curricular budget, the answer is yes. I could take monies from many different co-curricular and athletic lines to fund, you know, for this twenty-four thousand dollars. But as I mentioned, it was, this was Mountain View Athletic Transportation that was not spent going to Mountain View Athletic Fields, and it seemed to me to be an appropriate, you know, transfer in, in that respect, and that's why I brought it before you. As you know, we do budget transfers quite frequently. I just mentioned, we did almost, you know, we did hundreds of thousands for special education, where we didn't budget for it, but we had to, because we didn't have staffing. So yes, I could nickel and dime, or whatever you're talking about, take all these, a lot of different lines to make it work, but it just seemed to make sense to me to do it in one fell swoop with one line, because, again, it was Mountain View was the common denominator for it.
If I can also add to that.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
This is a, a good example that even if we had a very rational, plausible way to pay for this, I would not allow this to occur without this coming to the board. This is something that was unbudgeted, this is something that is unique. This is not a project that even if we had a buildings and grounds line sitting there with forty thousand dollars, without this being brought to the board, we would not go forward with this kind of an expenditure. So I do want to just make sure the board is clear on that. And perspective is everything. I think there are sixty-seven middle schools in the state, and Mountain View Middle School is the fourth lowest per pupil cost in the entire state. So very, very similar to what we see across our schools, we have an incredibly low per pupil cost. And this is one that I think for a relatively small investment of money that was already approved by the voters for this singular purpose of supporting our student athletes, I think is something that will give back to the community for years to come.
Thank you, Brian. All right, so.
One last, one last question at some point?
Go ahead, Dan. Sorry, Ginny. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, one last question is, Scott and Brian, do you believe that the maintenance on this field would be reduced and/or the usability of the field would be greatly enhanced by doing this project?
Well, the, the, the maintenance of the field, we do slice seating, we do, sometimes we do sod around goalmouths. So you wouldn't necessarily have to do the same level of repair. So I do think it's quite likely that some of the slice seating, the sod repair for certain parts of the field, for example, around the goal and lacrosse, they call it the crease, that part of the field, soccer goalmouths just get destroyed. So I do think we would likely see some savings there. But I think what you would get is you would have a field that would be grass, it would be lush, and it would be a nice surface for kids to play on, as opposed to the affectionate dust bowl that my kids played on there for, for years.
Hang on one second, Alan. Ginny, Dan, are you good?
Thank you.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
So Ginny, go ahead.
It just seems to me that if, if some of these things are things that are never going to make it into the budget, that if we don't, when these opportunities come up, take advantage of them, that a lot of our facilities are really going to be hurting. That CIP has so many big things in it, and our Capital Reserve has so many big things in it, that either need to be done because they're falling apart, or need to be done for safety, that sometimes when these smaller things come up, that are never going to make it into the budget, if we don't take care of them when an opportunity comes, then our facilities and grounds are going to just be a mess. So it seems that if we can take care of them in, in little opportunities that we have, then we should take advantage of it. It's not like we're, you know, not using money that the taxpayers have already voted for us to use, and have said, you know, this is the budget that we vote on for you to use, and it's aligned budget, so go ahead and use it. It seems to me that it makes sense to take care of the things that we have here for the use of our town.
Right, thank you, Ginny. Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, I think there's probably a little more savings in, with an irrigation system. We don't have our staff moving water cannons every time you got to put them on and off, because they do have to get moved.
Right.
And that's quite a job, and that takes time, and away from them doing other maintenance items. So I think there's a savings there as well.
Right, good point, Alan. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. We've discussed this a lot. Before I do roll call, Jared, go ahead.
Just, just a final comment. If, if this is something, or if anything, I would say that we're not going to put into an operating budget, should give a strategic pause on if we should actually allocate funds to it. I always look at it as, you know, we go through a process, not just by this body, but by other bodies. Budget Committee is one of them. And I know I'd like to keep them on board for the fiscal concern, or the fiscal responsibility that we've used for the past couple of years. If we just look at our CRF, you know, we have two people that are voting no. I would hate to try to increase that to other members if they're finding that we're spending money that hasn't been brought to them, and we're articulating that we would not put it into our budget, but we want to spend it anyway. It's just a cause for concern for me. So I would just ask the, the, each board member to think about that. If it's not something that we would want to place in our operating budget, it should give a strategic pause on if we should be spending money for that item. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
It's not in our CIP either.
No.
And it's over the twenty-five thousand threshold.
No, it's, it's not a replacement.
Right. All right, so we've had good discussion. We have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to do roll call. Reda?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ginny. I'm looking at you saying, Dan, Ginny.
Yes.
Jared?
No.
Janelle?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Alan?
Abstain.
Abstain. Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we have one abstention, one no, and the rest, yes. So motion passed. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, Scott. Was there anything else, Scott?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Budget Committee. Jared, that's you.
Budget Committee, we actually have our first meeting April 20th at 7:00 PM. It will be a remote meeting, and the session will be designated by the town administration through their Zoom.
Okay, perfect. Policy review. We did have a meeting on April 12th, but that has been canceled. So our next meeting is May 10th at 5:30, and that will be a remote meeting. C and E, Ginny?
Um, C and E, our April meeting was canceled as well, and we will be meeting May 10th at 7:00 PM. It will be remote. And may also report on our stipend committee, and that our meetings are being organized, and they will, we will start meeting soon.
Great, thank you. All right, so the next is next week, on April 15th, we have an SAU board meeting. It is remote. Scott sent out the invitations today at 6 o'clock. If you can't make it, just let me know you can't make it. Anyone else? Jared? All right. And moving on to Superintendent's report.
Thank you. A few things have already been mentioned, so I'll, I won't get into a lot of detail, but Caleb mentioned that athletics were starting up, so that's all gone really well thus far. The, I think the first games start next week, so we've got a lot of student athletes participating, and we're, we're glad to see them be able to get outside, with the exception of boys volleyball, which is inside, and enjoy the spring season. Since our last meeting, the Gobstown High School Performing Arts Department put out a wonderful concert video. If anyone is so inclined to watch it, it had the full band, orchestra, strings, select vocal ensemble. It was really just an awesome. You know, I, I've talked about how athletics has had to shift and pivot. I think performing arts have had to shift and pivot and go through an evolutionary process considerably more significant than athletics. And this concert was really, really well done. The kids did an awesome job, and it was just really nice to be able to see and hear live music. We do have a couple of things that have come to us with respect to policy KF, which is our facilities use policy. And I'm going to ask Mr. Gross to speak to this in just a moment, but our policy identifies fees associated with using our facilities. The board will recall that we have essentially not allowed the use of our facilities, with the exception of parks and rec. And we do have spring softball, baseball, soccer, and a few other types of requests. Mr. Gross?
Yeah, so we have a request before us. This one is for Babe Ruth Softball to use our, our fields. And one of the issues that they're experiencing is the fact that due to the fact that they didn't have a season last year, and they get a lot of their money through concessions, and due to the fact that they can't do concessions this year, they're asking for not so much a waiver of the fee, but an in, being able to do in-kind work or donation. So I met with Justin Hopp and Sean Sweeney, who is the president of Gobstown Babe Ruth Softball. And what they're proposing is to provide pretty much labor that would support their two thousand dollar, labor or materials that would support their two thousand dollar fee. One of the things that they've already done is they, the gentleman, Mr. Sweeney, happens to own a fence company. He has done a lot of fence repairs already to that area. He fixed two gates that were broken. So he's already demonstrated, in my opinion, and in Justin's opinion, good faith. But the, the building itself needs paint, that needs, the trim needs to be redone. There's a lot of work that, that needs to be done. And that group, Babe Ruth Softball, is willing to do all of that in lieu of the two thousand dollar ordinarily fee. Now, I will say that this, I think, is unusual due to COVID, and I, I think if there are other, I'm not aware of any other groups, but there might be other groups this spring, or, or maybe even going into the fall, where we might want to entertain that, just simply due to the hardship factor, where they didn't have the ability to raise, you know, to raise funds. And I also think that it would be incumbent upon, you know, Justin and myself to make sure that they actually agree to do what they say they're going to do. So in the case of Mr. Sweeney and Babe Ruth Softball, we have a list, which they are going to sign off on, that they're going to agree to do with that. So that's kind of where, you know, where we stand on, on that one. But we wanted to at least disclose to you what's going on, and make sure that you're okay with it.
Jared, go ahead.
Do you need a motion to waive the policy for this?
I, I, I would say that probably would make the most sense, Jared. Arguably, this could be under the Superintendent's emergency authorization, but as, as the board knows, anything that I can delay and bring to you, I do. So this was one. And I think Scott's right. I think if there are any other groups that are current groups that we have worked with for years, if they weren't able to pay the fee, I would hope that we would have a little bit of flexibility. These are, you know, good local people who are volunteering their time, and it, it seemed really fair to us.
And they're local kids that are participating.
Yeah, these are all our kids.
These are all our kids, anyway.
All right, so, oh, Ginny.
I, I don't think this is new, Scott. Didn't we used to do a lot of?
We did, but we got away from it. And if you remember, we, this was going on for a long time. And then we decided to go with fees because of the fact that it, many people promised, but yet did not deliver. So I think that's why we went away from it. And I think now we're in a situation where it would require a waiver, as Jared said, just so that folks know this, we're doing this because of unusual circumstances.
Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to waive the appropriate policies to the Babe Ruth Baseball League, knowing that they will return for activities and work product that they'll provide to the concession stand and other things as directed by the Superintendent and his administrator.
Okay, perfect. Do I have a second? By Terry, any other discussion?
For the record, it's softball.
Softball, sorry.
Yep, it's okay.
Okay.
Babe Ruth, I always think baseball, sorry.
Go ahead, Alan.
Is Babe Ruth baseball?
What we're waiving is the fee.
The two thousand dollar fee.
And, and in light of what I'll call in-kind donation.
Right.
And they have a list of stuff that they're going to do.
And do specifically to the unusual nature of the past year.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. Do we have any other discussion? All right, I'll do roll call. Reda?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous, motion passed. Okay Brian, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll continue.
You're welcome.
Caleb mentioned this as well, but the Addams Family, looks like it's gonna be pretty incredible. I can't wait to see it. You know, it's, it's gonna be available to everyone, so you're gonna be able to stream it, and we, we do have to charge a fee for the stream, but we, and I don't believe this has changed, my direction was to make the fee as small as it possibly could be. We have a requirement for the royalties and the use of the subscription of the platform, but I think it's gonna be $2.50 for anyone who wants to see this really pretty incredible...
It's five, right.
Come on.
It's five.
So they, see what they did to me right there?
That's still quite a good deal.
This is not bad.
All right, it's still a good deal, but it's not as good of a deal as 2.50, so who raised it to five?
Tickets have cost more and this is, you're buying a stream, not a single person.
All right, I'm not gonna argue with Mr. Hagner.
Yeah, I can buy value, it's good.
My position on this has been really consistent for the last 13 years, that I want to support these programs and I don't want families to have to spend more money than they should. So, five bucks, all right, I like 2.50 better though, but I think Mrs. McCann might have gotten one past the goalie here on me, on that one.
Scott had his hand.
Or it was Mr. Gross.
It was collectively, but I, I saw on Friday, I was here in the building, we had a meeting, and I went down afterwards to the theater to watch.
I did too.
And I was blown away by how good this was, and the energy in that theater, so they had probably about 15, 20 students, performers on the stage, but then it was equal amount in the audience and just cheering each other on and, I don't know, I guess, I don't know, I've never seen anything quite like it, so, I mean, just, it was awesome, and I hope everybody will watch the stream.
And our old friend, Mr. McCune is doing all the, the editing.
Oh, nice.
So he's splicing it all together, working his magic down in Florida.
Great.
Couple of other updates, I wanted to let the Board know that we are looking into a new arrangement for contracted custodial supports. We have had significant struggles in hiring and retaining custodians. In particular in New Boston, we have custodial supports from a contracted agency that will be starting shortly, but we are also looking at that for coverage in Goffstown, so I wanted to let the Board know. We have put our unions on notice, this is nothing to do with our lack of support for our own employees, this has to do with, we can't fill vacancies, and we do have the ability to hire some contracted services, so I wanted to let the Board know about that. We received notification from the state that the state has something in special education called the State Performance Plan, and the State Performance Plan is made up of 20 indicators, and one of them is indicator 11. And indicator 11 is the timeliness of initial evaluations, that you have to have initial evaluations for special education consideration done within a certain timeframe, and every year the state audits us, and we received 100% this year in both Goffstown and New Boston. So I'd like to congratulate Dr. Dolph and her staff for doing a good job to stay current with their testing. We were notified that we will be having a Title III onsite, which is our English Language Learner Program. It's been a really long time since we've had an onsite evaluation, and that will be coming up in the next several months, and we've been working with the consultant at the department for that. I had mentioned previously, but I wanted to let you know, our online kindergarten registration continues to go really well. Gail Kenny continues to do great work and has gotten this up and running, and it's really been a nice streamline, so that parents are able to go on, they can upload documents, they can get everything done electronically and not have to be in-person exchanging papers, and it's really just a nice, new offering that we're able to give to our families. Ginny mentioned the stipend committee, so that'll be getting up and rolling in April, I think I saw some dates going around or being considered. At our second meeting in May, I've asked Mrs. Barry to do a presentation on how are our students doing and how do we know? So I wanted to let you know that that's, I asked that question several months ago, and I told Mrs. Barry that we would be doing this in May, and she has been busy planning and working on that presentation, and I think that we'll all be the better for seeing it at the second meeting in May. I wanted to let you know that our RFP for heating controls will be going out soon, this will be a capital reserve fund project. The Board will recall that we're replacing old pneumatic switches and controllers as part of our heating system at Bartlett and Maple and going with digital controls, so that's gonna be going out for bid shortly, as will be the fire suppression system cistern repair. Mountain View has a pump-up system, Mountain View is on a septic system, it is not city water and city sewer, so we actually have a fire suppression system that has a giant 20,000 gallon cistern that pumps water uphill to operate our fire suppression system, and that project has been targeted through the capital reserve fund, that also will be going out to bid shortly. One of the things that I've talked at length about is sort of that premise of the evolution of public education, and what do we keep, what do we get rid of as an outcome of the pandemic? And one of the things I wanted to let the Board know, this week we will be having faculty meetings in all of our schools, and I am asking for the tech committee to get back together and to evaluate a couple of options with respect to a learning management software platform. Mr. Cludier, I wanted to mention this because you were involved in all the work around House Bill 1612 and all of the data governance plan, so I didn't know if that might be something, the meetings will all be on Zoom, but I did wanna let you know that I will be asking the tech committee to get back together this week, and we'll be asking them to review a number of requests that I have. So Dan, we'll keep you involved in that, if that's something that you might be able to participate depending on your availability.
Yes please.
Indeed, thank you. In terms of learning supports next year, we have been busy planning our summer, as well as enrichment and remedial supports for students, as well as some of our planning for next year to be able to provide remedial supports and enrichment to all students who want them. So more to come, we're in the, kind of the final stages of getting that planned. I wanted to let you know that in terms of fully reopening the middle school, today, 5th and 6th graders started back full-time at Mountain View, and on the 19th, 7th and 8th graders will be fully back at Mountain View. And I wanted to let the Board know that we had to hire two long-term subs, one in social studies and one in English Language Arts, as well as providing some additional sections of support in order to support all of our remote students. So all of the current remote students, we had to do a little maneuvering to make sure that we had sufficient supports in place to keep anyone who wanted to stay remote in a remote environment. So, the total cost of that was about $15,000, so I did wanna let the Board know that we executed that, and it was the only way that we could fully keep all of our remote students in the courses that they have. So in terms of our reopening, today we had, all of our 2nd graders at Bartlett and Maple were back in, as well as our 5th and 6th graders. I was at all three schools today, they were, the kids were thrilled, lots of happy kids, great to see them all back, the energy level in the rooms was spectacular, so great job to everybody there. Next week, we will have 3rd grade fully in, and then the following week will be everybody back in, but I'll talk about that at the end of my report if I may. I wanted to let, and I wasn't sure Caleb, if you had this one, I received notification from Robbie Grady, who is the President of the Goffstown Rotary Club. She wanted to congratulate Goffstown High School senior Jenna Teshida for winning the local four-way test speech contest. And apparently, this is a contest they do every year, and Jenna is moving on to the finals against New Hampshire and Vermont, and she's the first winner that Goffstown has ever had, according to Robbie, so I thought that was really great, and thank you to Robbie for letting, letting us know that. And I will get into a little bit about the FBLA, I know Caleb mentioned it, but I have names, they won second place for Backpack for Change Project, they won first place for Make-A-Wish Project, they won honor, Honorable Chapter Award, they win, they won the FBLA Week Award, second place, and then individual students, I have Logan Bover, first place for Accounting II, Brooklyn Hallenrake, second place for Banking and Financial Systems, Calvin Sage for Insurance and Risk Management, first place. This sounds like Mr. Gross's kinda club. Marketing and Management Decision Making, Riley O'Neil and Ashley Underwood, second place, Marketing, third place I have Carly Swansburg and Maddie Prue, and Personal Finance for Garrett Cody in third place, and the overall annual Gold Seal Chapter Award, Goffstown High School, second place, and Caleb did mention Vincent Pang, who was the State Officer, I don't know what position that was.
It's just, it's a six-person officer board, he's one of six, which is quite an achievement in and of itself.
Yeah.
All right, well there you go. So let me get into the COVID updates, and Daryl, I'm not sure how this looks on GTV, so I'll read through all the information to make sure everyone can hear it. Do you want me to turn that light off?
Yeah, thank you.
So the state of the state, in terms of COVID numbers, I'm sure everyone is seeing that the numbers continue to go up. So over the last several weeks, we have seen the numbers continue to increase statewide. We had been going down for quite some time, but we are very much in an upward trajectory in the wrong direction at this point. So in the state, we have 382 per 100,000 of new cases, Hillsborough County, 424, the community of Goffstown with 38 current cases, which is down this week from last week, that was positive, that's 210 per 100,000. New Boston, nine current cases, they were up to 16 last week, so I'm glad to see them back down a little bit, 155 per 100,000. Testing positivity continues to increase, so we're almost back over that 5% threshold, which if you see down below, would bump us into the moderate level of risk of community transmission. And the state of New Hampshire percentage fully vaccinated is up to 18.1%. I think the state is doing an exceptional job right now with vaccines. They just announced they've got another 12,000 Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines that are gonna be given out this weekend at the New Hampshire Motor Speedway. So they're really, I think, continuing to make good progress. In terms of the overall level of community transmission, we continue to be in the substantial area, so again, you take the higher of these two, so that would be community spread at substantial. We go down, you guys have all seen this before, staffing continues to be very strained for us, but this would essentially put us at the point where according to the state's own algorithm, we should be in a hybrid model. I don't have the updates for staffing for March, I'll have that to you at your next meeting. So, the next piece I'll do is I'll move on to our website, and if you go down, you'll see our numbers, we are up to 216, and right now we have 14 active cases, four at Bartlett, six at the high school, two at Mountain View, two at New Boston. So we have continued to see a lot of cases, and our numbers still definitely substantiate, there's a lot of community spread happening. So this is the executive order that likely people have heard about, this is the one that's requiring all public schools to fully reopen five days a week by the 19th of April. This was something, we just actually received this, I think Friday night, or it might even have been Saturday. We had received information from the Governor, and he had put information on Twitter that this was coming, but we had not seen the actual order. So this is the order. There is one piece that I might respectfully disagree with the Governor, which I do on a lot of things actually, but one of the things that he says in here is that, that we are seeing, if you look right here, whereas with the increased distribution of COVID-19 vaccine to New Hampshire residents and corresponding decline in community transmission, that's the fundamental premise that this order is based upon. I don't know where he's getting corresponding decline in community transmission, that is not what's happening. So I could show you if you'd like to see what the, what the, oops, sorry, what the numbers look like. But essentially, the, the big thing for the Board to know with this is this right here on number three. It says, "New Hampshire schools shall retain the option to offer." Option to offer. So despite the fact that this ruling, this executive order, really goes in the face of local control, and for, for you as the locally-elected school board, you don't get to make this local decision, but you do get to say whether you will continue to offer full-time distance learning or hybrid, not both. So we, we are committed to continuing to offer fully remote for all of our families who want it, so I want the Board to know that that assurance is being given to you. However, we are not going to continue to offer the hybrid option. So that does create more of a burden on teachers, that if you have some kids there five days a week, some kids there two days a week, who's gonna have to pick that up, who's gonna have to work with the kids, it's all gonna fall on the teachers. So I did wanna let you know with respect to the Governor's order, that we would continue to offer the fully remote option, but that the hybrid option would no longer be offered to families. So, that's the, the executive order here, and then the last piece I wanted to share, well really, is just that, what it's gonna mean for the high school, because this is really only gonna impact the high school. We had done a survey where we had 51% of respondents told us they wanted us to stay in the same model for the rest of the school year, and we had about 40-something percent that wanted us to have kids back more time. I will tell you that I am solidly in the "I want kids in school more time" camp, but it was incredibly challenging for us logistically to be able to continue to offer all the students who want a fully remote option, and then we had 85 families that indicated if we fully reopen, that they would shift to fully remote. We are still evaluating that, I'm hoping that that number won't be 85, because that will be a very challenging obstacle for us. I wanna be fully clear and transparent with the Board, that will mean that kids will have to change classes, it'll mean that we may not be able to offer sections for classes that students are already enrolled in, it may mean that we have to redo teacher schedules. So at this point, we're still trying to determine the full impact of this, but the high school is ready to fully reopen, we will be moving forward with four lunches, so that is gonna be a significant change in schedules as well. But at this point, I did want you to know that there will be some impact in terms of families moving between remote or in-person. So, we're gonna minimize that as best we can, so it's not disruptive to kids and to their families, as well as teachers, but in all likelihood, there will be an impact to this. So, we will have a survey going out to parents to indicate their commitment to remaining where they are, and if they have unique circumstances and they're requesting to move, that we're asking them to contact their school counselor, and we're gonna work through in that realm. So...
Oh, sorry, Ellen had a question if you were...
Yeah, it was just the, one last thing that I had, Ellen, was just an update that our, our next vaccine clinic is on April 16th. That is a Friday, I'm very pleased that we're able to get that Friday spot, because we anticipate that some people could have some side effects, they may not feel well after getting the vaccine. I know that I personally, when I got the vaccine at our clinic, I did not feel well for the entire next day, and I'm hoping that, that other people, you know, feel okay, but with it on a Friday night, you know, we'll have the weekend to be able to, to rest up, and I, I'm pretty sure I'm gonna get out of my chores that weekend, so I'm looking forward to that.
All right, go ahead Ellen.
The high school, how, if we have, where kids are in full-time, every day, they're here every day, but we have a significant number of children going full remote, how is staff supposed to do both?
So we have dedicated sections for remote at the high school level, but the problem is, is just like we wanna cap classes physically onsite, what I don't wanna do is say, okay, Mr. Gross is teaching a 10th grade English class, and we're now gonna give him another 15 students in that class. So we're being mindful of our class sizes, of our sections, the impact on teachers, so at this point, we're, we're not quite there yet, we still have some figuring out to do, but we do not have an overabundance of staff.
Cause I'm trying, I think I heard you say maybe discontinuing some classes the kids have been in all year?
We, we may have some classes that we're not able to continue to offer, so what would that mean? That might, well, I'm, I'm not saying that that's gonna be the case, but I want the Board to know that that is a plausible reality for the circumstances, unfortunately, that the Governor has... the governor has imposed upon us.
So that means they wouldn't get their credit?
Correct. Including kids that might be graduating. So we, we do want to be very careful, but I do not want to sugarcoat this at all and just give you my assurance that everything's going to be fine. We're going to figure it out, because that, that could not be the case for all students. We will start processing these with seniors and work our way backwards so that those closest to graduation. And we will do everything we can to support these kids, but it could be that there are kids that need certain classes that may not continue to run. And it could be that kids have to take incompletes. It could mean that we need to do something over the summer or next school year for those students to complete those courses for their transcripts.
And this is, oh, this issue does not exist at Mountain, at Mountain View?
This issue does not exist anymore at Mountain View, based on the information I shared with you earlier, that we added two full-time substitutes, long-term subs, and we have a number of people that are essentially being paid an extra class, so that we're able to maintain at the middle school.
So prior to opening, full in-school or full-remote, for the high school, how much time prior to that happening will the student and parents be told of these changes?
Oh, very little. They will have very little notice, but I would say, we didn't have any notice. So I found out on Friday afternoon, no prior notice to superintendents, no notification from the Department of Education, no one told us this was coming. No one said, "School districts, you might want to be planning and thinking about this." So, you know, respectfully, this is a, a problem that unfortunately has been created and conquered. And ideologically, I don't disagree with the premise, but allowing local elected officials to be able to figure out how and when to do this, that makes the most sense for your own unique location with your own staffing levels and challenges, makes all the sense in the world. Why wouldn't we want to wait until teachers are fully vaccinated? We would. We weren't given that option. So there will be implications, but unfortunately, anyone, and, and I will apologize profusely to anyone who's impacted, but really, this is out of our control.
If I could, Brian, I, I want to also add that some problems that we have, you, you really can't even throw money at that, okay? So we talked about, we can't hire custodians. We can't hire some of these folks. So I heard that on television, it's like, "Oh, the federal government has given tremendous resources, et cetera, et cetera." I want the community to know that while we are, while we did get a grant, by the way, grants take a long time to get approved, that's one thing. So these are monies that are going to help us a year, two years now, from now, but even if we did have money to reallocate funds, we simply cannot hire these people. That is the big, big issue. Or you can't get desks, or you can't, I mean, there's, there's a shortage of certain things. So we've been pretty lucky, as we've been proactive, but this is not something that you can just even buy your way out of, because you can't.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I just know there's a lot of people out in, in town and-
Right, that's why I wanted to say that.
-cyberspace, very concerned.
Absolutely.
And I just felt more elaboration might be helpful.
Yeah, and, and as always, I welcome people to, to call me, to call the school principal if people have questions. We are committed to keeping the remote option for those who are already in it. So that assurance I do want to give you. Our ability to move new kids into remote is compromised. It's a challenge. And our ability to make sure that we can offer everything we are currently offering will continue to be a challenge as well.
So I saw Jared and Ginny. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Brian, just the high school with the lunches, how's the logistics of that going to play out for the four lunches? Are these going to be people coming into the cafeteria to get food, then leaving?
So the way, the way that it works is everyone has to preorder using an app. So we have a Nutrislice app that families are able to order the day before, that they choose what they want. And the way that the kitchen is doing is they make all the meals, they put them all on kind of a standing rack. Students come down, they're able to buy those meals. We're not offering the full scope of à la carte options that we have in the past, so the, the options are a little more limited, but we do allow some flexibility for students to be in some of the common areas. We allow students to have, to be able to sit in hallways. We allow students to go outside when the weather's nice. Again, we're trying to promote as much distancing as we can with the students, but lunches, logistically, Jared, are a real challenge for us, and we've, you know, food service would be another example. We, we could say, we have money to hire more food service people, but by the time, you know, if you're able to find anyone, get them trained, you know, it, it takes time to be able to do these things. And I can't say enough about the, the great work that Megan Bizarro and her team have done, really Herculean efforts to make sure that our kids are, are well-nutritioned and well-fed. So many thanks to Megan and her team, but the, the challenge, and Jared, I would also add that she's also, Megan is also doing a lot of product development here at the high school, and then driving the product to the elementary schools, so some of that needs to change. The reason that she's doing that is the kitchens are smaller in the elementary schools, and it's harder for her to keep her staff physically distanced. So, you know, there are a lot of challenges. We'll, we'll continue to work through them. And in, in terms of the four lunches, the four lunches make sense just based on the numbers. I would say I don't think it makes sense from a teaching and learning perspective. It's more disruptive, there's more transition to try to get kids in and out of class, back on topic. It is a challenge, but just to be able to do lunches safely, and really, I, I would say our biggest challenge is right now, busing, not at the high school level, elementary, middle school, and keeping kids separated on school buses, and our ability to have areas for kids to have snack and lunches where they're six feet apart is a challenge for us. I was at Maple Ave today in a second-grade classroom when they were having snacks today, and the teacher did a great job. She had a third of the class having snacks, and they were turned a separate way, they were all spaced out, and the other kids were doing activities, and then she rotated them. I was in a classroom today, second-grade classroom, another second-grade classroom, where the teacher was going over expectations around pencil sharpening, because you can't just all go sharpen your pencils at once. You have to be methodical, you have to have kids in line, you have to have them in the queue. So all these things that we used to kind of just take for granted, really need a lot more time, attention, adult supervision, and again, I can't say enough about the great work that our teachers have done to make this all happen.
Jared, you good?
Good.
All right, Ginny?
I can't imagine what's going on at the high school, will be going on at the high school, because I know at this time of the year, they're usually choosing classes for next year as well.
They are.
So between figuring out classes for this change and figuring out the classes for next year, it has to be really frustrating.
Our school counselors have automated some of the services that they're offering. Kids are able to go and choose classes online. They still have to schedule an appointment with their counselor, but all of that work still continues, because it has to. It has to. But not that we're counting, three weeks to April vacation, and then six and a half weeks to the end of the school year. So we're, we're in the home stretch. I, I would say, I've heard from a lot of my friends and colleagues in other school districts, and I've heard superintendents say over and over how exhausted they are. I want you to know, I'm not exhausted. MC is not exhausted. Kate, Scott Gross, wherever he just went, he may be exhausted. Kate's not exhausted. We're full of energy. We're picking up speed. We're going to finish the school year strong, as we would expect all of our teachers to do the same.
And Brian, there's no way to get the waiver for, to leave the high school as is?
We-
Compromised, and if kids want to be back five days?
I, I had-
It's either nothing.
Yeah, so there is a process in the governor's executive order that allows you to request a waiver. We had a call with the commissioner today at noon time. The commissioner basically said, unless you have a valid COVID reason, any request will be denied. So I don't think it's worth pursuing. I would rather figure it out, put, put our energy into making this work for kids, and, and make the best of it as we can.
And the high school would be back the week of April?
The high school would be back on the 19th, so we'll have more information to go out to families. I also wanted to let you know that we, we can't close schools anymore if we had a cluster or an outbreak beyond 48 hours without me getting permission from the commissioner and the governor. So that's also new.
That's amazing. Yeah, that's in the, in the ordinance.
So, again, we haven't closed schools. We didn't do the Thanksgiving to Martin Luther King Day close like the majority of, certainly of South Central districts all did, but if we did have another case where we had a cluster, that's what it would take for me to close a school, even temporarily, but we don't even have the authority to do that now without the commissioner's approval and the governor. So if we did have a situation, and if you ever hear me make a call that the school be closed for 48 hours, and that further guidance will be forthcoming, that's why. Because I would be seeking permission to keep the school closed on a longer-term basis. So even if you have staffing shortages, if you have a cluster, we have to have permission to close our schools. I find that unfortunate. I, again, I, I don't have the full scope of how many schools were closed, for how long they were closed, what the reasons were. We didn't close a school at all, except for having a full-blown identified cluster where we had school-based transmission. There are a lot of schools that would have a positive case, and they'd shut the school down for two weeks, for a positive case. We've had 216 positive cases. If we would have closed the school every time we had a positive case, we wouldn't be open. We wouldn't have been open. We would have been open for a little bit in September, a little bit in October, and then we would have been shut down from there on. So live free or die.
Any other questions for Brian before we move on? Well, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Does anybody know where the lights are?
I do.
Uh, Brian knows where the lights are.
Is that what he was doing?
Yeah, I couldn't, I didn't want to turn all the lights on.
Ah, all right.
Who'd ever thought you'd just put it down?
Going to think outside the box, Mr. Gross.
I was nervous that I might turn all the lights on. That was the-
All right, so Brian, when you're ready, it's, oh, we're going into old business, updates, building committee discussion, and you guys have stuff in your packet.
We sure do. So the information that we put in the packet was to give the board a couple of options. So the, the first thing you'll see in your packet was the original memo back from October 2019, which feels like forever ago. But you can see here that we had created the building committee with the following composition: three school board members, business administrator, facilities director, school administrator, four teachers and/or support staff, five community members, and one budget committee member. What we are recommending is, at this point, to revise the charge of the committee. And essentially, we're looking for the committee to move from being a building committee to being focused on a facilities planning committee. And the reason for that is follows. Short-term, long-term, we think that there is some important work for the facilities planning committee to look at. We have talked about SER II and SER III. These are the federal stimulus funds that we will be receiving. We are able to use a significant portion of those funds for capital projects, such as building projects. So that could include things like roofs, windows, it could include HVAC systems, heating system upgrades, et cetera. And what we'd like to recommend is to change the charge to the following: to establish a facilities planning committee as a subcommittee of the Goffstown School Board to evaluate short- and long-term facility needs within the Goffstown School District, to make recommendations to the school board for prioritization of short- and long-term facility needs, as well as review potential funding options. And in terms of the composition of the committee, what Mr. Gross and I would like to do is to reach out to the, the folks who are already on the committee, many of whom have reached out to Scott, saying, "Are we going to be getting back together? Do we, are we going to be looking to schedule a meeting?" And to look at who we might be able to recapture, and then we would come back to you if we feel like we need additional volunteers. The meeting format and timing, we'd like to recommend that the meetings would be done on Zoom, but still allowing for compliance with the right-to-know law, 91A, and that we would potentially be able to use the breakout functionality to be able to have some kind of subcommittees within the building committee continue. We would think that it would make sense to hold meetings in May and June, prior to the summer recess. And again, as I stated, the focus of the committee would be to look at short- and long-term needs, as well as our ability to use the funds through SER II and ARP SER III, we're calling it SER III, as well. So this would also include looking at the CIP, as well as the mini-CIP.
That sounds like CIP.
Yeah. So that would be our recommendation at this point in time. I'm happy to answer any questions, as is Mr. Gross.
Ellen, go ahead.
Um, does the short and long-term facility needs exclude space needs?
No.
No.
Okay, it includes?
Yes.
Yes.
But the premise being, Ellen, instead of calling, instead of saying that we have a building committee, a building committee indicates that you're going to have a building project, you're going to have a bond, you're going to have an architect, you're going to be looking at plans. And what we're looking at in terms of a facilities planning committee is, we have potentially a sizable amount of grant money available that we could look at for facilities-related projects. We want the committee to weigh in on that. We want people like Jared, Ellen, Terry, Rob Witt from New Boston, our board member who was on the committee. We have a, we had a great committee of people with a diverse background that were ready, willing, and able to do this work. So we want to look at, long-term, what are the needs, as well as what do we need to do right now, today, knowing that we're likely not in a position that we're going forward with a multi, you know, million-dollar bond being proposed. And by the way, there are local communities, there's one in particular, $98 million bond is going to the voters.
With no state aid?
With no state aid. $98 million, and that's going to a deliberative session that's been postponed.
It sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, this group is being asked to take the CIP and the mini-CIP and prioritize it, and then say, "This is what we suggest be done for second, third with this SER money."
We, I would say yes to a degree. We will have recommendations for the committee to review, but we really think that this is, this is bigger than just Scott, Randy, and I, you know, sitting in the conference room saying, "Well, we've got all this money, we could be looking to do windows at Maple Ave and windows at Bartlett." We can justify that, that's part of ventilation, that's part of ensuring appropriate air quality during a pandemic. That would be an example of an allowable expense.
Well, that's the other thing, what's allowable?
Yep. So we'll go over all that as part of this.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Brian? So you'll let them know when your first meeting is?
I think, yeah, and I might recommend if the board is in concurrence with kind of the, the altered charge, that you might want to adopt the charge, and you might want to adopt changing the committee to a facilities planning committee instead of a building committee.
All right, so is everybody good with changing the name from building committee to facilities planning committee? That's what it says here, right?
Yep.
So we would need a motion to, to change that?
I'll make that motion to take the revised committee chart as given.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Bye, Ellen. Any other discussion before I do roll call? Okay, seeing none, Rhonda?
Yes.
And Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, three in all of us. And what was the other one you needed?
No, that, that was an all-encompassing that did it. Thank you. And we'll get, Mr. Gross, I think what we'll do is we'll reach out to the existing building committee folks. Yeah. Gauge who's still interested. We're hoping that we'll be able to keep the majority of those people. We have a really strong group of people, and we would look to meet in the May timeframe, probably once in May, once in June. So I don't know if you're going to talk about the chair of that committee tonight. I'll leave that up to board members, but Mr. Gross and I, as well as Mr. Loring, will be at all those meetings, so we'll plan to, to help that process and to support the board members as best we can.
Are you still looking at, given the, I guess, broader scope? Are you still looking at, given the, I guess, broader scope, I'll use the term of the charge, are we still looking at the same subcommittee of the subcommittee?
Structure, I mean?
Yeah. Because I see that's on this, one of the back pages.
It's, I, I think tentatively, I would say, yes, similar structure. But it really would be predicated upon what our response is, Ellen. So we had a pretty good number before, right? I mean, Jared, what do we have, like, 20, you know, 15 to 20 people? We may not have quite as many now. But our thinking would be that we would try to keep a similar structure to it.
So you had mentioned a chair. So usually, subcommittees do their own chair, but I know last year, year and a half ago, the board did it. So what is the, the three people that are on the building committee are Jared, Ellen, and Terry. So, once they have their meeting, they can decide who is their chair, or we can decide. How do you guys want to play that? Anybody? Nobody cares?
Yeah. And, you know, the default might be that Ellen was the chair in the past. So if that was the case, is Ellen still the chair? It really makes no difference to us. We just want to know, you know, how best to support the efforts of the committee and to support board members. So we don't mind doing, you know, to hosting the Zoom, we have to make sure that we have the conference bridge line, because it has to be, the public has to be able to listen contemporaneously, you know. So we'll make sure that we have all those things done, the agendas. But, you know, really, we just wanted to bring this to the board for your consideration, because it is a subcommittee of the board.
Right. So does anybody have an opinion? Usually, when subcommittees meet, they elect their own chair within that subcommittee. This would did a little different last time.
I, I think the charge, though, Heather, is, we said that the board member would be the chair of subcommittees.
Of subcommittees?
Yeah.
The three subcommittees of the subcommittee, yes. But of the whole committee?
Right, was Ellen last time.
I, I...
That's, we, what we said is, we, we appointed Ellen to be that.
Right.
We could, we could modify that at this time, if we so wish, by indicating, we would like the committee to get together as a whole and choose their own of the...
Of the three.
Three board members.
Right.
And I will say, Mr. Gross and I believe it should be a school board member that chairs the committee. So...
Absolutely.
You know, whereas Scott wouldn't mind doing it, I wouldn't mind doing it. We feel it's most appropriate. It should be chaired by, by a board member.
Well, it's not only that, but you want the chair and vice chair. If the chair is not able to attend, to be school board members.
Agreed.
So, you know, I would say that, just kind of open up and say, all officers of the, the subcommittee need to be school board members, would be my recommendation, at the minimum.
Well, it says that in here.
Yeah.
It does?
Yeah, we have three school board members.
The subcommittee of the subcommittee say, it says it someplace, that the board members, the chair...
Right, I do remember reading that.
Yeah. And, and again, that was based on sort of that premise, that the structure had an executive committee that was made up of seven individuals. It was the chair and the vice chair of each of the three respective subcommittees, as well as the business administrator. Without knowing exactly how many people we're going to have, I think we need to be a little flexible with that structure. And, you know, we'll have to see once we reach out to people. But, you know, our, our intent would be that it should be a board member that chairs the committee.
Absolutely. So what is the feeling of the board? Do we want to appoint someone as a chair, or do we want the subcommittee to do it? Well, would be the three board members that would figure it out.
If you want buy-in, I mean, my opinion, if you want buy-in from any kind of people that are working together, give them a skin in the game and give them a voice. You know, and I would say, just let them go through.
You mean, the, the other people on the committees?
Absolutely. To be able to say collectively, for those people that want to help out, they already know Terry, they already know Ellen, they already know myself from the work that we've done. You know, if Ellen wants to, you know, set the meeting in the priority for our first meeting and make sure that they're all in concurrence, I think that's the way to go.
Anybody else?
Because I mean, you're, you're working on the collaborative discussions of the team.
Everybody good with that?
I don't mind. I would just say, the adminis, if, I'm assuming it would be Brian there, that he get, like he does with us.
Right. And then you would have everybody that's part of that committee nominate a chair?
Yeah, I, I think that makes the most sense. So what we would do is, Scott and I would set the agenda, and I would call the meeting to order. I would kind of bring forth the premise that we're looking for one of the school board members to be the chair of the committee. And I, I guess, I, I would say, it might make sense for the three of you to have a conversation and, and talk it out, see what you guys all think before the meeting.
So you would have a chair. Would you have a vice chair, or just a chair? Usually, it's just a chair with the subcommittees.
Chair and vice, I would say we need both. I agree with those.
Yeah, I, Jared brings a good point, that if the chair's not able to be there, we still want someone who can facilitate the meeting.
Yep.
It doesn't matter to us, again, you know, Scott and I would say that this is, this is an important subcommittee for the board. So we think it makes sense that board members would be active members of this, developing the agenda, potentially, you know, doing some of the technology pieces around hosting the Zoom, you know, some of that kind of stuff, that, you know, we really don't want it to all be reliant on Scott or myself. But we'll, we're happy to proceed in that way.
Alright, so is that, we're all on the same page with that? The three, at least the three of you are good?
Yeah.
Okay. Dan, did you have something you want to say?
I just want to say yes.
Okay, thank you.
On, on the last page of the packet we got for this?
Yeah.
I think Deliverables School Board Update May of 2022, not 2020?
No, that was the original memo, Ellen. So that was when we established the committee in 2019. So that obviously got derailed from, yeah. So we, we would need to, I think, work with the committee, reestablish when we think Deliverables would be able to be brought forth. In short-term, long-term, we will have, if we choose to move forward using some of the SER-2 or SER-3 funds, our recommendation would be to look at summer projects of next summer. So it's too late at this point, if you wanted to do roofing projects, or windows, or heating, you know, HVAC, it's too late this summer. But we would start laying the groundwork and all the planning. So the RFP development, working with our engineers, whatever it is that we have to do, we would do anticipation for a June of '22 project.
And these monies will still be available, then?
The monies will still be available.
Okay. So I'm thinking ahead, when we, as a board or administration, puts together this CIP document that we work on over the summer, that we, we need to know.
CIP could look a little different this year, because whereas in the past, we've had, you know, three to six million dollars of CIP projects, but no funding associated with them, some of these projects...
Would have the funding there.
Provided their permissible grant activities, which we've already been given quite a bit of guidance, we could be looking at a pretty significant hunk of money going towards getting some of those CIP projects done that we haven't budgeted for.
And could our spreadsheet, please, indicate which of the projects?
Yes. Yeah, so Scott will update the CIP in June.
Okay.
And by then, I would think that the, the facilities planning committee would have met once, maybe twice.
And gone over it.
And gone over it. And we'll have our recommendations, because, you know, obviously, we have to go through the grant writing process, it has to be approved by the department. But our, our hope would be, so again, you know, we're appreciative that we have these funds available. But they're, essentially, it's a cliff, right? You can't, I'm not going to bring forth a bunch of recommendations for staffing, and I'm going to hire 15 new teachers, and then turn around in the FY23 budget and say, oh, by the way, remember those 15 teachers we hired? We now built them into the budget, and that's why you see, you know, a $2 million budget increase. So we want to try to target, I will say, there will be a few staffing recommendations that we will make for next year, one of which was a cut that Mrs. Kohler had asked for a fifth and sixth grade counselor. I cut it. That's an example of something I'd like to bring back and put it into next year, using grant funds for one year, and then budget for the subsequent FY23. But, you know, we're going to be able to, so we've got in SER-2, $1.3 million, $1.1 million, thank you, Scott. And in SER-3, we're looking at like 2.4. So in total, you're talking about over $3 million. Now granted, we're not recommending all of that be considered for facilities projects. But Scott and I think a large percent of that really could be to try to get some of these bigger projects done that we have not been able to budget for.
Yeah, but Ellen, getting to your point, anything that we change in CIP, you'll, the board will have first view of that anyway. And the nice part is that it will have a corresponding revenue source. So those on CIP, and I'll give you an, an example, like if we did a project, and let's say it was a half a million dollar project, and we had it out in 2026, and now we want to do it in 2022 or 2023, well, they might balk at it if there was no funding source. But because there is a funding source, they're like, okay, you've got to pay for it. So, but that's what you're...
Because it qualifies now, and, and wouldn't qualify for it, because it won't exist in 20 years from now. Got it. Thank you.
Alright, any other discussion on the building committee? So you'll let the committee members know when the...
We will.
The dates are.
We will.
Alright, so now we're going to move on to the committee assignments. So first, I want to thank everybody for getting them to me. I worked on them for a long time. I tried to give everybody their top choices. As you know, we're down one board member. So I did reach out to some of you and ask if you could fill in on a subcommittee until we appoint someone, and then I can see if they want to step in. So like with finance committee, I asked Janelle to step in until we get a new person. Policy committee for both Goffstown and the SAU, I've asked Rheta to step in and Terry to be an alternate. And on the negotiations committee, I filled in, and, you know, if somebody else wants it, they can have it. So does anybody have any questions on any of these subcommittees? Go ahead, Ellen.
Hold on, I'm going to sign here. In looking at these, and maybe I'm totally wrong in my understanding, but being an alternate is not being on a committee, in my opinion. You get called upon when someone who is on the committee can't be there.
Correct.
You can go to meetings, we can go to any meetings, but we don't get to vote on anything unless somebody's not there who's on the committee. We actually have two board members on no standing committees.
What are you talking, everybody has two, at least two committees, and then of...
Standing committees. Standing committees and ad hoc committees are different. Stand, the board has four standing committees: curriculum, finance, PNC, and policy. We have actually two board members not on any standing committee, which I find a little odd, disconcerting for me, but...
Well, what you see is what everybody picked. I did not put somebody on a committee except the ones that I called that did not ask for it.
I only signed up for one committee, and I'm not on it.
You're, no, you signed up for CIP?
Yep.
And you're on it. You signed, I have your sheet. I gave you everything you signed up for.
No, I, I'm not disputing that. I'm saying, standing committees, not the ad hoc standing. But that's fine, I just...
You're talking about CNE?
Yeah.
CNE, you're an alternate?
Yeah.
Because you're on the building committee and the CIP, which are huge committees.
I understand that.
And they, you're an important part of those committees. So that's why I put you as an alternate with CNE.
I just, it just strikes me very odd, and it's just my opinion, but I think I'm the only board member here who's been a public education teacher, and I don't think I've ever been appointed to curriculum and education.
But you would have to talk to some of the other three. They've been on it for eight-plus years.
Yeah.
And Ellen, as far as being on these committees, you, I mean, on curriculum and education, everyone's allowed to talk and give their opinions and add to the discussion. And it's all, I mean, everybody listens to everybody, and that's weighed into any votes that we, that we have. So it's not like, if you're an alternate, that you're left out and you have to sit in a corner. You're part of the whole discussion, and your, your opinions are going to be valued, just like New Boston's and, you know...
Did everybody else get that email from last year, saying that if you weren't on the committee, you weren't supposed to talk? You weren't supposed to participate? I got a great big long email from someplace on this district, from, I don't know from where, but it was a long email, saying that if you're an alternate, you're not allowed to talk. You're not allowed to participate. I mean, it was pretty clearly stated.
I don't know what you know.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I know you can't vote.
But, no, you can't vote, so you're not really on it. But that's fine, that's fine.
But building committee, Ellen, I mean, nobody else asked for building committee but the three of you. And I'm not going to put somebody...
That was an option.
What was that? I'm not going to...
That was an option.
But you're, you're valuable on the other two committees. And like Ginny said, you can go to CNE, and you can talk, and you can raise your concerns, you just can't vote. So, that's okay. Correct?
I mean, we always listen to everybody that, yeah.
I would think that all of our subcommittees have at least a public session, where anybody from the public, including an alternate, could speak.
Absolutely.
You know, I, I don't know with the individual committees, if we can talk after the public session, if you're not a voting member. That I don't know.
Usually, it's up to the chair, but board members are allowed to freely speak or answer questions, or, you know, we don't get really strict. You just can't vote if you're there as an alternate. Dan, did you want to say something?
Only that, there's, there's two terms that we like to, I like to use, and one is called participate, and one is called execute, so to speak. And participation by board members at any subcommittee, I've never been shut down, and I've attended a few, and it's only the execution of the official vote that, that's there. But we don't normally allow the public to participate. We allow the public at a certain times to be able to ask questions, and at times, because they're not there to participate, so...
Right. Right, exactly. So if there is a committee that I put you on as, as just a temporary, that you want to stay on, let me know as soon as possible, so that, because my plan is, once we appoint someone, that I talk to them this week to fill in these spots. So that would be Janelle, Terry, Rheta, and then me for negotiations. If somebody wants to take my spot, they're more than happy to do that. Does anybody else have any...
Hi, Heather.
Yes, Janelle, go ahead.
First of all, I'm fine with doing the finance committee, so you can put me on for that.
Okay.
And then the other thing I was wondering, just kind of in response to Helen, to Ellen's comment, was, if we, maybe if we can refresh my memory, how, like, say we had interest in our board, more interest than we have seats available in the committee, how we can change that? If I recall, we can sort of make that call in our committee and change kind of our, how many seats we have available for school board members. But I wasn't, I was just wondering if that was something that Ellen was curious about, if she maybe wanted to sit on any of these committees permanently.
You mean to, for CNE to add an extra, so instead of three board, instead of three, four, plus we have New Boston that sits on it?
Right. Yep.
I'm not sure who, where that, where it came from.
Yeah, those, that would be a decision of the board. You know, obviously, you just can't get in a situation that you have a quorum of the school board. So your, your subcommittees would need to, right, they would need to be less, they would need to be four members or less.
And just as a reminder, if I may, Ms. Chair, the, you know, we did try four individuals on the finance committee, not last year, but the year before.
Yes.
And we were constantly running into a situation where somebody may not be there, and somebody was late. And with two members, you don't have a quorum. So, and if you had five members show up, then somebody had to get kicked out of the room anyway, because then it would be a school board meeting, or, you know, without notification. So it's walking that fine line if we do have four people...
Right.
Assigned, that you have to make sure at least three of them are there, or you cannot conduct business, per se.
Right. Plus, on this particular subcommittee, we have a New Boston board member that sits on it as well.
Yeah, but that wouldn't go towards the Goffstown, but that, I don't know...
Yeah, they don't count.
I don't know if...
As a quorum.
But they vote, don't they?
Yeah, but they're not a quorum for Goffstown's board.
Oh, I see.
They'd only be a quorum for SAU, which I don't think we'd have a problem there either.
Right. So what, do we want to discuss more about CNE, or just leave it as is and see how we go? Ellen, you can go to all the meetings. see how we go? Ellen, you can go to all the meetings and participate. You just can't vote.
Yeah.
And see how you feel, and if you want to change it, come to us, and we can talk about it.
Thank you. The other thing is neither budget committee rep is on finance committee.
Oh, yeah. I was on there, and I asked to be removed.
You actually asked to be removed?
Yes. That was because of the situation where we had four people that were scheduled, and somebody was always late. I won't say who they were, but they're no longer here. But we would not have a quorum. And so we couldn't conduct business until they showed up. So I respectfully asked, Mr. Dutton at the time was the chair, to resign from that committee and be an alternate so that we can conduct business with only two individuals.
And Jared specifically asked to be an alternate. I did give everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Their choice. I did not change anything without talking to someone. And if I needed to add someone, I called you, or I emailed you. I am trying to be respectful of everybody's choices because they pick what they have time for, what they're interested in, and so forth. So the only other thing that was added was the stipend committee, which is Jenny. And I did put you as an alternate for budget, Ellen, because you and Jared did that last year, and it seemed to work.
And switched it around for CIP.
And then also, just to remind everybody, if you can't show for your subcommittee, let that chair or Denise or me know, so we can let the alternate know. And if the alternate can't go, then I will try to step in and help out wherever I can. All right? And hopefully, by next school year, we can get back meeting regularly with all these subcommittees. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? So Janelle, I'll keep you on finance, and then the rest of you, just let me know your thoughts as soon as possible, and then whomever we appoint, I'll see if they can step in. All right. Thank you, everybody. All right. So moving on, we have new business. Brian, legislative update?
Yeah, I had been asked, I think it was Ellen had asked if we could have a brief legislative update. And I will say, just being mindful of the fact that it's quarter past nine, and we still have quite a bit of non-public ahead of us this evening, I might ask the board to let me do just an expedient version of this. But we gave everyone copies of the legislative update from the School Boards Association that just came out last week. And the first glance that you will see is there are hundreds of bills that pertain to education. In particular, Mr. Gross and I have testified on a number of bills that pertained to funding, and anything that had to do with adequacy aid, or if we thought we were going to lose adequacy aid. But my preference would be to not go over really any of these bills, but really just to say that here's the list. If you're interested in learning more, every single bill that's listed, you can click, you can go to the General Court website, you can read every bill, you can go to every committee. It's never been easier to participate in the legislative process than it is this year. This would be one of the good outcomes of the pandemic, is the meetings are all virtual. You can go and sign in that you either support or don't support a bill. You can request to testify, and you can testify from your computer. So there are certainly, as I said, you'll see here, I mean, there are hundreds of bills that are still making their way through the process, and a number of them that are kind of a big deal, you know, everything from school funding to things about what defines an adequate education, you know, school building aid, special education. There are a lot of bills here, and I didn't know if it was the board's intent. I might defer to Ellen, if you wanted to talk about any of these in particular. But this is a summary.
Yeah.
So I thought that minimally, this would allow board members, if you're so inclined, and this could be a part-time job, you know, just reading these and participating and being well-informed really is a pretty significant undertaking. So I think I would leave it there. And if there are any unique bills in particular that the board would like to learn more about, we'd be happy to get a little more information, but I would pause there.
Go ahead, Ellen.
If I may follow up, I was wondering, because there is so much that goes on that pertains to education, if one of our subcommittees could take on reviewing them and coming, like filtering them, and coming forward to the board, telling us which are key, what does it mean to us, the ups and downs for the key legislative pieces, and just let us know about it. It just, there is a whole lot. Matter of fact, today, I think we got from New Hampshire School Board Association, quite a list. I saw those things that you just read off. I was wondering how the board would feel about assigning legislative review to one of our subcommittees.
Sounds like a whole subcommittee by itself.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Well, and although I appreciate the sentiment of being informed and actively participating, people need to recognize how much time is involved with this. The School Boards Association pays people full-time to track and monitor these bills and to advocate on behalf of their membership. You know, I would say, to what end? You know, it's interesting. It's certainly good to know. But, you know, I would say Scott and I, I think, have kind of brought to you some of the most significant bills that he and I have participated and provided testimony in. But there are so many of these that, I mean, this, it just feels a little bit like a rabbit hole to me. And, you know, people's time is precious, our ability to track and monitor, and just have it be meaningful work. I don't disagree, Ellen. And maybe you'd like to think about kind of at the School Board Association level. You know, I don't know if they have an ongoing committee. They have people who track the legislation. But, you know, in terms of our board, I don't know, I guess I would leave it up to the board members.
We could just click on one of the House bills or Senate bills and read it for ourselves.
You can.
And I've done that with that one that went from three and a half to two and a half percent with this state funding, catastrophic aid, something. And I went through that. I did the numbers to see where that left us and all that. But if the board's not interested in that, and you're right, Brian, I appreciate that you let us know the important things. I know there are times I feel like I want to contact our reps as an individual. And sometimes just reading it, they don't always make all that much sense.
No, they don't make sense.
So it's okay if the board's not interested. I just thought I'd raise it because there's been a lot of discussion around town and people interested in how it's impacting us.
If we have a retreat, it might be a good topic to talk at our retreat and see what everybody is thinking of how to move forward with this stuff. Scott?
Yeah, I just, for one, the House is voting this week. So if individually you are concerned about a bill, this would be the time to send an email to your state reps to let them know your individual position. That's one. Two, the lesson that I learned through this past year was that when we had our state reps here, or we had, we were talking to our state reps, the one thing that we failed to do was to ask them, what bills are you either sponsoring or co-sponsoring?
Right.
So one of our state reps is a co-sponsor of a bill that would change the burden of proof in special education hearings. That's significant. That is extremely significant.
And by the way.
It would be nice to know that when we met, that they would have said that they were altering language in an existing bill that would make it much more difficult and costly for the local school district. And that never came up. So we have to do our homework collectively as a district to say, hey, you know, what bills are you sponsoring that are education-related? And I'm telling you that there are quite a few, and that never came up in conversation.
Wow.
And that one example will overturn a Supreme Court decision and put the burden on local school districts to establish the burden of proof in dispute resolution with parents over special ed. So.
What representative is that?
I'd rather not say.
Yeah, that's okay. You can look it up on the, and they'll tell you who represents what bill.
But it would also be nice to know that that person who did that, or any bill for that matter, if it impacts education, reach out to your school board. What do you think?
Right.
But, and that's, I think, that's the lesson that I took from this last experience. We just, we try to be always focusing on the state funding. It's kind of like a kumbaya. And it really needs to be more like, what are you sponsoring, and what are you supporting?
More pointed.
More pointed, yeah.
If I may, there was another one listing, I read it today, saying that the Claremont decision on school funding, or figuring out what adequacy meant, okay, was not binding on the House or Senate. How can that be? But that's what it said. And I sat there going, then why do we bother going through the courts and getting a court decision on this stuff if it's not binding? So that concerned me when I read that today, too.
And my position has always been, I try to maintain political neutrality. I would say, with the exception of school funding, I'm clearly not neutral on that particular topic. And there's a lot of things in here that some people will like, some people won't like. You know, to Scott's point, maybe what we could think about, and this might kind of get to what Ellen is saying, if we focused on having our state reps maybe come a little more frequently, and at the beginning of the legislative session, and instead of focusing on building aid, kindergarten, and adequacy aid, you know, Scott raises a really good point to say, you know, what bills are you sponsoring? What are you supporting? And I will say, there is one rep who is good about calling me and asking my opinion about things. But in all the years that I've been doing that, this work, that's a short list. They don't call us. They don't call and say, what's the impact of our local school district? And I would welcome our state reps to do that. Call me. Call Mr. Gross.
Thank you.
Any other discussion before we move on? All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we're on to board authorization request. A board motion is needed to grant continued authorization to the superintendent under the superintendent's emergency operations plan for COVID-19 as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF, pandemic epidemic emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designee authorization to respond at his or her discretion to changing public health circumstances, and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting.
I'll move that.
Was that Ellen you said?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Do I have a second? By Jenny. I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. The last one is a motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments at a sequence and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting. Do I have a motion by Ellen? Do I have a second?
Dan will second.
Dan will second. Thank you, Dan. All right, I'm going to do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. All right. Thank you, guys. On to school staffing.
And what I might recommend this evening is, you'll see that this is a big night for staffing. I'd like to break this into a couple of parts. The first part would just be notifications, so no board action needed. This would be to inform you of a leave of absence for Caitlin Enger, which will be from June 16th until some unforeseen time from Goshen High School. We have three long-term subs that we would notify you of, Maureen McCardle, Cynthia Pelletier, and Hillary Reed at Maple Ave, Mountain View and Mountain View. And lastly, we have a student support specialist transfer for Connor Hager, moving from a teaching position here, a one-year teaching position, back to that tutor position for the alt ed program. For the approvals, I would recommend that we go into non-public. You have all of your administrator approvals, as well as teacher approvals for this evening. So we will have non-public for both 91A32A and C this evening. And Mrs. McGrath is here, and we'll stay for non-public.
Okay. And co-curricular sports?
We could do co-curricular sports if you wanted to get those, get those out of the way.
Let's do those now.
So this would be, let's see, Randy Levering for boys varsity volleyball, Jack Bellmore, who is a returning former student athlete of ours, coaching JV, Adam Sherman, JV lacrosse boys, Gary Walsh, boys tennis, Josh Paray, baseball volunteer, Scott Brandon, softball volunteer, and the infamous Mr. Ward, returning to girls' track from retirement.
Nice. So do I have a motion to accept the co-curricular sports nominations by Jenny? Do I have a second? By Retta? I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. All right. So is there other business that may legally come before the meeting? All right, seeing none. So we do need non-public. I'll need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91-A, semicolon, 32A and C. A is the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. And C, matters which, if discussed in public, would lightly affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself unless such person requests an open meeting. This exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement, or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant. So I need a motion?
So moved.
By Jared, do I have a second? By Retta? Do a roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're in non-public. So Daryl can break down everything.